I will now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for April 8th, 2019. May I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Mr. Markison?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First up is the President's Report. I'm sure everybody knows that this is our last meeting for three board members. So this will be my last meeting, my last President's Report, along with Lisa Elliott and Diana Kryling, and I've asked them, as part of my President's Report, if they would like to say something before we go. Lisa?
Thanks for this opportunity, Reese, and I want to thank you especially for doing the truly heavy lifting. I mean, there's just no comparison, the load on the President, and you've been a wonderful leader and consensus builder, and I really very much appreciate that. And the rest of our board, it's been a real pleasure. I think we're a very diverse group, and it's been fascinating to build consensus, and I have deep respect for each of you, and I love the fact that we bring different perspectives. I have mixed feelings about stepping down. On the one hand, I think it's important for the boards to have continuity, but I'll relish the extra time and giving others an opportunity to represent the community. So just my motives for joining this board were kind of a mix of selfishness and volunteerism. I wanted to contribute to the community that helped raise our children. My three kids are now well beyond Lake Forest High School. But I also wanted to learn more about education. I'm an educator myself and think and write a lot about how we learn, and so it's been great to have this insider's look at the educational process. So thank you, both the administration and the teachers and the rest of the board for that learning experience. And when I joined the board, one of my main motivations was that, as a parent, I was frustrated that I felt this was, you know, four years ago now, that the school was somewhat complacent, that, hey, this is Lake Forest, we gotta be great, we're great. And the changes that have happened in the last four years have just been remarkable, and I really give almost all of that credit to Shayla Holland, who I think we hired at maybe our third meeting. We voted on your -- seems like back in the Jurassic era at this point. It's been a long journey since then, but it's been really remarkable, and I just wanted to shout out some of the advances that have come on board from this really visionary, young principal with truly remarkable leadership skills. And I've had the privilege of chairing the Education Committee, which we had a much closer up view of the many innovations. The block scheduling has come on board, the theater program, student supports, earned honors, AP and dual credit expansion. All of this, changes have been remarkable, you know, in four years compared to what we witnessed in the time before that. So I just really want to thank you and hope and assume that the board will continue to support you in your great work, and of course, your excellent team and staff. So, thank you very much. And of course, the other major responsibility of the board is financial, and it's been a good experience for me to witness the careful, highly competent stewardship of our tax dollars under Jen Hermes and her excellent team, so I wanted to shout out to Jen and the administrative staff under her. It's been very impressive. There is always going to be challenges as we want to improve our facilities, to bring them up to the level of our peer districts, but I'm confident the citizens of Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, and Knollwood will continue to see the value of our high-quality education and continue to support our community's greatest resource. So I just want to close by thanking the caucuses and voters for this opportunity, my fellow board members for your kindness and dedication, and especially the hard-working staff, teachers, and administrators for always putting our children's education and well-being first. So, thank you.
Diana?
Thank you, Reese. It has been an honor to serve on the Lake Forest High School District 115 School Board for the last four years, and it's gone really quickly in some ways and really slowly in other ways. I have truly enjoyed my time, and I have learned so much, and not just the alphabet soup of education speak, which there's a lot of, but also the real behind-the-scenes work of a school board. We are fortunate to have the most incredible administrative team, Jen, Jenny, Rebecca, Brittany, and Jordan, and Allison, to name a few, and our incredible principal, Dr. Holland. They are all intelligent, creative problem solvers, and have been so patient in answering all of my questions, especially the first couple of years. So, thank you. I would like to thank my fellow board members, Reese, Lisa, Dave, Ted, Sally, and Tom. Over the past couple of years, we've agreed on a lot of things, disagreed on a lot of things, but in the end, we always come to the best decision for the kids, and that's what it's really all about. So, thank you all. I will miss you. It is also very bittersweet. We've done a lot of great things over the last couple of years at Lake Forest High School, and I hope that everybody in the community can really understand and see all the hard work that went into making these things come about. The attendance policy, the school day schedule, the resulting increase of electives for our students to take in theater and art and business, the implementation of the growth mindset in the classrooms, the focus on student involvement in club sports and theater productions, and all the while maintaining financial oversight on the budget and the district spending. Work is currently underway on the master facility plan to make the instructional spaces and the physical buildings as outstanding as the curriculum teachers and extracurricular activities that take place in the buildings and on the grounds. There's a great energy among the administrators and the instructional directors right now. I left last week's Education Committee just fired up. There's just so much going on with the educational initiatives that are currently being discussed at the high school, the revamping of the scout experience to really encompass the whole freshman year. Lisa alluded to a couple other things. I just really wish my kids were going to be freshman students soon instead of in college, because it's really a great high school. We are the leader on the North Shore, and it's such a privilege to have been just a little bit of part of all of that. So, that's really exciting. As my term ends at the end of the month, I am thrilled to be turning my spot over to Jenny, and Dewey, and John. They bring open minds and level heads, which are the key to being a Board of Education member, and I wish them the very best. When I was interviewed by the caucus for this position four years ago, I was asked, what would I want as an epitaph about my term? My response was to be an integral part of the team, work hard, be open-minded, and leave the school in a better place than when I joined. Thank you for this opportunity.
So, our community elected three outstanding new District 115 board members last week, and this is this board's last meeting. I want to thank everyone on the board, especially Lisa and Diana, who are rolling off with me. Lisa has really led our Education Committee for the last four years and significantly increased the education-related dialogue with the board and staff. Thank you. All of the educational changes of the last four years that were just mentioned start with staff and Lisa and the Ed Committee. Diana led our efforts to improve our community communications. We had a lot of newbies on the board four years ago and had a ton of inaccurate information out there when we all started. Diana led the effort with staff to step up the quality and frequency of communication with our stakeholders and thereby increase trust. Thank you both. I wrote a very long final President's Report with ten takeaways and supporting detail. My send-off for future generations. I threw it away. I remembered what Nikki Snobland said to me four years ago as we were walking down the hall to the meeting where I was likely to be elected President of the Board. Nikki was coming off the Board, and very wise, and became a trusted advisor and a very good friend. She said, "You probably won't be the best president, and you hopefully won't be the worst, but just don't screw this up."[546.66][546.66](Laughter). I took that to mean not to take myself so seriously, and everything should be fine. You know how the mayor of Lake Forest and family get to flip the switch at the Christmas tree lighting? On spring break, my kids asked, "What's my Christmas tree lighting?" So, we came up with me naming their favorite teachers at my last board meeting, and they were. Mr. Van Nuys, Mr. Duar, Mr. Kleeman, Mr. Dunn, Ms. Ecclestone, Mr. Borzak, Senora Lev, Mr. Patel, Mrs. Lemke, Madame Song, Madame Spurling, and Ms. Lindsay, and my personal shout-out to David Brandies and Maggie Harmson. My daughters had many great teachers, and all those touchpoints really did change their lives. Four years, and in some ways, it feels like we're just getting started, but new eyes and new energy are critical. Not ten things, but here are a few things to remember. We strive to be a world-class educational institution. World-class. Not above average or better than New Trier. New board, please remember that when you're struggling to make the right decision. And to make those decisions harder, remember we have finite resources: time, energy, and money. You can add love and goodwill, but without at least a lot of the first three resources, you're not going to get world-class. Continue to challenge and support all kids. Teach perseverance, resilience, and that it's okay to fail, especially in high school. I usually quote coaches and movies, and this one is from a Netflix movie. It says, "The most grown-up thing someone can do is fail at things they really care about." Teach kids how to care, how to try, how to bounce. Lastly, do more for the 10 or 15 percent. The great thing about public education is it's available to everyone. The challenge leaders in public education have is how to make sure it's equally accessible to all. Mike uses a great phrase. "We need to make sure all our kids have access to the good stuff." We can't just evenly spread our finite resources across programs and kids and expect that access to happen. We do a great job serving the top 85, 90 percent of kids, and like most schools, not just Lake Forest High School, it's harder to serve the other 10 or 15 percent of kids. Who are those 10 or 15 percent? It depends. The percentage of kids not ready for college per the SAT and ACT. It's the percentage of kids struggling with anxiety and depression. It's the percentage of kids that did really well academically in middle school and aren't doing so well in ninth grade. It's the percentage of students from low-income minority families. We won't truly be a world-class educational institution developing compassionate, courageous, and accomplished young adults until all kids have access to the good stuff. I know we're doing a lot. Do more. Care deeply. Try harder, and don't quit. Do better and truly be world-class. Thank you. Mike?
All right, I will hand off to Dr. Holland to begin.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so there's a lot going on over at the high school, even though the school year is coming to a close. That does not mean it's getting any quieter. Never seems to be quiet. So, upcoming, we've got All Shook Up, the Spring Musical. I'm not 100% sure on the dates, but I know the cast, and everyone is working very hard to prepare the show for the public, and we are very much looking forward to the outcome. Student Council, I've met with Mr. Waniger and Ms. Lyons, the heads of Alliance and Embrace Clubs, about presentations that they will be giving to student council in the coming weeks regarding our inclusion initiative, and I'm very excited to see where that goes before the year comes to an end. Elections for student council are coming up. Sadly, I will be dethroned, so I'd just like to thank you guys. This isn't my last meeting, but thank you guys for just letting me be here and speak for the student body. Student Council is also in charge of, we are creating an intermural badminton league, so that'll be very interesting to see, and that's about it. Thank you.
Good evening. So tomorrow is Assessment Day at the high school. A few years ago, our school adopted the SAT suite of assessments as a part of our student growth model, and with that, our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors take different assessments within that suite. Recently, the state adopted the suite, so we're ahead of the game once again. Either way, tomorrow's Assessment Day, a lot of reminders have gone out to our students and families just regarding the schedule, and so I just want to encourage everyone, if you have questions, whether it's around transportation, whether, when is your start time, and where do you need to be, please go to our website. It is front and center right now. Also, I want to thank Applause for a phenomenal fundraising effort to support our music department with our brand-new gorgeous piano. It truly is a piece of art, and I'm into art, but you just open the hood, and it's amazing. It is beautiful. It sounds wonderful. It's been wonderful meeting with the faculty in the area and also engaging with students around the piano. It's a conversation piece right now as well, but it has created so much excitement in our music department, and our students are really excited, and they feel validated and supported through the efforts that Applause has made, as well as community members who have donated towards it, and we're really excited about that. But I do want to say thank you for all of your efforts and for all of your work. I know it was a huge undertaking, but it's totally changed the feel even in the music department right now, so thank you for that. I also want to say thank you to our I said I wasn't going to cry. To our board members, for many personal and professional reasons. Many of you started when I started, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for caring. Thank you for believing, and thank you for really seeing the true potential of all of our kids. Thank you for trusting my leadership. Thank you for challenging us all the time, every day, to be our best and to really be accountable for the lives that we're responsible for every day. You will be missed, and I think that's all I can get out right now, but thank you.
All right, and I'm not sure which segue to follow up on first, so I will start where Dr. Holland left off, that Dr. Holland's also been selected as the UIC Educational Leader of the Year.[1041.51][1041.51](Applause). She received this honor by virtue of her dedication to quality teaching and learning and her passionate advocacy for ensuring that all students learn. So, congratulations. There's a gala event on April 26th in downtown Chicago in her honor. So, also, another segue from Dr. Holland is the appreciation for Applause. We have a couple representatives from Applause here, I believe. One, maybe two, I'm not sure. I think two. And one of the things that, in preparation for this public recognition that I was so appreciative of, was the number of things, the number of grants that Applause has directed towards our school district. So, a number of new instruments virtually every single year, and then also the investment in subsidizing the trips, the overseas trips every year, things that make an investment in every single student that participates, whether they be musicians or participants in the instruments or on the trip itself. So, overall, just enriching experiences, whether through clinics or honors opportunities for them, or for workshops, other things that Applause subsidizes. So, I wanted to say thank you very much publicly and also give you a moment to celebrate with us at the podium, if you had a couple words to share with us.
Hello, my name is Allison Wagner, and I've served on the Applause Board for the last four years, the last two years as President. I'm with Lisa Waters, who's our treasurer, and she's also been on the Board for the last three years. We're both the two that sort of chaired the Byakie Program. I actually want to thank everyone for implementing InfoSnap several years ago, because one of the big benefits that we saw as Applause was we went from membership donations of 6,000, back before InfoSnap came around, to donations of 20,000 a year. So, we saw a huge increase in the amount of donations through InfoSnap, which has allowed us to invest in a lot more things for the music programs, both extracurricular and curricular in the program. So, we're just really excited about that. And tonight, we're just really excited to present the Fasioli 212 Performance Grade Piano to the high school. It is a step up in piano. Many of our peer schools have Steinways and other high-performance pianos, and this is really an opportunity for our high school to have a piano that competes at some of the levels of the other schools. And so, yes, the music directors are really excited about it, the students are really excited about it. You'll have an opportunity to hear it in our May concerts, so if you have a chance, there'll be a video that explains the piano and introduces it, so we hope you can join us in May for those concerts. Thank you.
So, Allison, thank you very, very much for all of your tireless efforts. I remember, and also Lisa, thank you as well. Remember when the question of the piano came up, one of the things that became obvious was that this was something that the school district could not do on its own, and so I know there's a huge amount of work that went into that, and this is a signature piece, without any question, no pun intended, for Applause, so thank you very, very much for So, part three of the superintendent's report is I wanted to bring you up to speed on a very important undertaking in the district right now, update on the master facility plan. So, we have established our working group. The entire group attended our first meeting. It was two weeks ago now, and the representatives from a wide range of stakeholders from various support groups and also from a wide range of at-large community members from each of the communities. One thing, Applause will be happy to hear is John Noble is also on the committee, and I don't know if you have a bigger friend than he is out there, but he's very eager to see that we pay attention to all parts of our school facility that supports our students, also administrators and representative from the Historical Society as well. Our first meeting, we did introductions. Most of the folks in the room did not know each other. Reviewed the process, it's about a year-and-a-half-long process, and reviewed the charge, so they're going to look at life safety and then also our instructional, athletic, and art spaces, so both campuses and all spaces throughout the building. And then the charge from the 2014 Board was to reimagine learning spaces, places, time, tools, and technology that are both inside and outside the classroom to affect all students, every student in the building. A couple of key items moving forward that came out of it, desire for the community members to visit other high schools in the region. We've confirmed that we've got the ability to go and visit two right now. We're going to take a trip back to New Trier and to Stevenson, so Mr. Lane and Ms. Kryling were there earlier this year, that led to us adopting the Facility Master Plan, so appreciate our neighbors being willing to host us again. So, our next meeting is next week, and we're working on the agenda for that, so each meeting is an agenda that's established by the architect. They've already been in the buildings, they've already been in both of the campuses, looking at the various spaces, and so they're going to be meeting with a wide range of stakeholders inside the building and also throughout the community, so look forward to providing future updates. Thank you. Mike?
This question is coming from the committee. Is publicly available?
We have not posted that. We can post that, the members of the community, yes.
Yeah, so then if community members have thoughts, they can funnel them to the committee. And is there anybody on the committee who has design or architectural expertise themselves?
I don't believe so. That's typically one of the things that is not a necessary component, to have somebody that works in a specific industry, whether it be technology or architecture, construction, whatnot. Sometimes there are people, but generally speaking, they're from various walks of life, and the idea is to come in with fresh eyes and ask probing questions, so.
And we have so much great expertise in these communities, and I know design is a very special eye, and, you know, more input, the better.
Yeah, there will be a wide range of public meetings, so for people to weigh in, architects will be engaging with the public with us as well throughout the process.
Okay, are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Yeah, just go to the podium and just state your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name's Mary Ann Donahue. I've had four children go through District 67 and 115. I've met a few of you in the past, but not all, so hello to those I have met. I want to give you a little bit of background on myself before I get into my reason for being here. Hopefully, the background will lend credence to what I would like to talk to you about. As I mentioned, I have had four children go through District 67 and 115. We went through Everett Elementary, Deer Path, and then the high school. Could not be happier with the outcome for my kids. My oldest son graduated in 2012. He's graduated from Purdue, aeronautical and astronautical engineer, and is working as an honest-to-God rocket scientist. My daughter, Mary Rose, graduated in 2014. She is finishing up her Masters this year at Colorado College in secondary education. Her objective is to be the next Mrs. Ecclestone. My daughter, Grace, who graduated in 2017, is a sophomore at Tulane University. She has two majors, psychology and early childhood education. She was so taken, even in first grade, she knew she wanted to be an elementary teacher because of the teachers she had at Everett, and she has never wavered from this desire or commitment. My son, Kevin, also graduated in 2017, and he is a sophomore at Grinnell College. All four kids got into great schools, did everything. I didn't have to pay anybody off, although I would've (laughter) if I needed to, but fortunately, that didn't happen. I was always a very involved parent. I was a perennial room mother for at least one class, if not more, was a team mom, went on all the band orchestra trips, was always very, very involved, to my delight. I'm actually very shy by nature, and being here and speaking to all of you is very out of my comfort zone, but I feel so importantly about what I need to talk to you about, and that is via the Mom Network. I found out that someone who had a very profound effect on my youngest son Kevin's life was at risk of not being rehired next year, and that person who may be very surprised I'm here is Mr. Graham O'Connor-Brooks. When my -- a couple of my kids were, you know, very high-achieving, mega AP-level students, you know, very bright, hardworking, including the rocket scientist, you know, you couldn't have a class hard enough for them, but this was not the case with my youngest son. When he got to the high school, I think the best term that could be used to describe him is that he was a hot mess. He had just been diagnosed with ADD. My husband had been very sick for quite some time, which is a whole 'nother story, but he had the very good fortune of the first, before school even started, of meeting Mr. O'Connor-Brooks. Graham taught him so much. He taught him to be a student. He taught him how to be organized, taught him how to succeed, taught him how to advocate for himself, was there personally and professionally for him. My husband died tragically, Grace and Kevin's freshman year, and one of the first people on our doorstep was my man over here. Just being there for Kevin made all the difference to him. I just can't say enough about him and how much he has done for Kevin academically, what he's done for other students who I know have had the pleasure and the privilege of having him as their resource teacher. Kevin, as I mentioned, is a sophomore at Grinnell College in Iowa. It's one of the highest-ranked schools in the country. Who'd have thunk it? But I can tell you, if it were not for Graham... But I can tell you, if it were not for Graham, he would not be there. And I thank you for all you have done for him, Graham, and because he is such a man, such a guy, he even continues to touch base with Kevin, "How's it going? What's going on?", you know, just the fact that somebody, another adult cares about him, and has been such a positive mentor, has been very life-affirming. So I think I've spoken well to, hopefully, the academic segment, which is certainly far and away the most important thing of why he has been employed by District 115 and will hopefully continue to do so. If I could also speak to the athletic portion, although my kids have never worked with him as a coach, I know he is a coach for, I think, basketball and golf. Again, background, all four of my kids were very involved athletically, a trait they did not inherit from me, but they were both captains of their varsity teams for two different sports, all four of them. Three of them were on the Wall of Excellence, two of them were Athletes of the Year. I was the team mom, obviously, you get kind of elected when your son or daughter is captain, so I've worked with a lot of coaches. I can't imagine working with a coach, or for my children having a coach, shall we say, on par with Mr. O'Connor-Brooks. What I'm sure he teaches these kids from responsibility, life lessons, sportsmanship, and just being an overall role model, I don't think you could ask for more. So anyway, as I said, this is very, in my entire time of, all 52 years combined of my kids going through these school districts, I've only ever lodged a complaint once. There was a first-grade teacher who everything sent home was grammatically, and you know, the words they were supposed to spell were misspelled, so I did feel compelled to speak up then, but I've always just kept a low profile, I'm very quiet, I just do what I need to do to support my kids and their teachers, but this is not something that I could just let pass. And I hope that you guys don't let it pass either. Okay? Thank you so much.
Are there any other members of the public? Okay, no reports from staff, some committee reports, the Education Committee, please.
Yeah, we had our last meeting of the year last Tuesday, April 2nd, and it was, as usual, a very informative session, we had, all of the leadership team from the high school was there, including all the instructional directors, and I, I'm also really happy with our, I think we've got some really terrific community members on the committee this year, so happy to turn that over to Tom's leadership. And the topic of the session led by Dr. Holland was reimagining freshman year, where we heard some very exciting ideas about sort of beginning with freshman year and ways to rethink the advising program, the curriculum, the, the placement of students, kind of this goal of reducing the labeling and leveling of our students was a, was a really prominent theme. So Dr. Holland pointed out that we have a bit of a challenge bringing the learning environment up to the level that the students are already familiar with from the middle school, and I think that will speak to some of the facilities plan that is going forward. Part of the re-envisioning of freshman year involves plans for a summer transition program, and that triggered a lot of discussion for incoming freshmen, opportunities to learn some academic skills and acclimate to the high school and getting help. And, and then there was considerable discussion about this issue of the levels and labels that students are, acquire through our different curriculum placement, and how to maybe move beyond that with this earned honors concept that we've revisited over and over in, or several times in the Education Committee, which I think is a really brilliant advance. So look forward to seeing from the outside how some of this new program works, and particularly the implementation of an advising program, which is something that I've been advocating for, for the beginning, so kudos to your vision, and, and I look forward to seeing how that advances. Thank you.
Has there been anything, finance and ops or policy since last month?
There was no finance and ops committee meeting, however, I did want to take a moment to just real quickly acknowledge and thank and celebrate this guy's work ethic. His contribution, his commitment, his drive, his passion, you know, I got to see it closely firsthand, Reese and I have meetings with Mike every month, and I saw how many different important aspects to this board that Reese was making sure along with Mike were, were being brought up, were being addressed, were being vetted. His, the commitment he had to this community, nobody has a full grasp of. He's, he spent hours working on behalf of the community and the board, and I just wanted to, to borrow my moment, since there was no finance and ops committee meeting, to, to share with you my deep-felt gratitude and appreciation for the man you are for this community. So Reese, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, all right, shut up. Was there a policy committee? Nope?
No, there was no policy committee since our last meeting, and there are no policies on tonight's agenda, so we'll move on.
Okay, Ted, NS, liaison reports.
By the way, I would like to thank Diana, who's leaving the policy committee, obviously, after this meeting. And again, there's no meeting, NSCD since our last meeting, and there is a foundation meeting tomorrow at noon, if anybody wants to attend, and also Wednesday night, there'll be a, the regular NSCD meeting, expect to see you all there.
Diana, anything on the foundation, APT?
Yes, it's my last one, so bear with me. Let's start with the foundation, a very, very huge and belated thank you to the foundation. Grant Day was February 22nd, and they awarded 14 grants totaling $152,000 to benefit our students. So just a huge shout-out to the foundation. I'm not going to read this entire list, although Jeff Volker did ask me to read the entire list, because he's Jeff, and it's awesome, I mean, the amount of different departments that they touched, and the amount of really cool stuff that our students are going to impact, be impacted with. I just wanted to share a couple of things, there's a universal laser cutter, which I personally kind of want to see what happens, I hear rumor that it might be at the luncheon. Virtual reality headsets, the concert piano was a very small portion of that money came from the foundation and was given to applause, I believe it was the final 20%, so really neat to see our different parent groups partnering together, so really innovative way of accomplishing things for the high school, kind of a parent partnership. Science, got the flexible science lab furniture, if you guys remember, that was a pilot last year, and based on the feedback they got, the foundation went ahead and approved another segment of the furniture going forward. World language conferences for some of our teachers, online prep software, RMA audiovisual equipment, and physics air tracks, air tracks and projectile launchers. Can only imagine how much fun they're going to have with all of those. Really good news, the piano's already in the building, as Allison alluded to, and getting to be used as well as the theater microphone, so grants in action. And again, thank you to the foundation, it's just amazing what you give to our kids every year. The luncheon, the foundation has their annual fundraising luncheon on April 17th, it's at Axmore Country Club from 11:00 to 2:00, tickets are still on sale, and you are encouraged to come. This is their fundraising event of the year, and it provides 50% of their annual revenue. Jeff encouraged you, if you can't come to the luncheon, Sally and I are going, you're always welcome to join us, but you can participate in the silent online auction, and you can do it on your phone, which we all love to have that. Kind of some highlights of the auction items, they have two parking spaces for that senior coveted lot, and you don't have to be a senior, a seven-night getaway package to Breckenridge, graduation VIP parking and seating, and prom VIP packages, seating, prom parade parking, et cetera, so really cool stuff. The high school swing sonatas will be playing, and they will get to showcase some of the grants, which is why I think the laser cutter, maybe Lisa's going to be there, I don't know, anyway, just a cool thought. So lots of cool things, so please come and support them at their luncheon. On the business incubator front, they do a $5,000 standing grant to allow the teams to create their prototypes and to test to see if their products are viable, and that's what's going on right now, so that's part of that grant money. Their pitch night is June 3rd. The foundation works with local businesses, foundations and corporations to raise $10,000 a year, and that goes to the winning team to allow them to put their idea into place. And right now, they don't have all that money, they've got $8,000 of it, so if any business wants to donate, I know Lisa would love to talk to you afterwards, she wears many hats, so just something to consider, pitch night is such a great opportunity for our kids, and one of those really neat innovations that's come along to the high school in the last couple of years, and has opened a lot of doors for a lot of our budding entrepreneurs. Moving on to the APT, they approved a new slate of officers, Beth Pearson will be their president. Jim Sullivan isn't here to report, and I don't know if you covered this last week, or last month about the career fair, the numbers? Okay, just real fast, Jim has done an amazing job with this function, this year there were 942 students that attended, up from 600 last year, they had 71 businesses up from 50. So Jim continues to really enhance that experience for our kids to connect and learn about careers. Prom is coming up, May 11th, the invitations are in the mail, tickets are going on sale, they need chaperones, so if any of you are interested, I know it's a perennial request, but they would love chaperones, and they're looking for more money for Project Safe Prom, which provides the buses that take them to and from. The Wall of Fame Ceremony was held on Friday, and they recognized three outstanding Lake Forest High School graduates, Chris Dryde, Craig Moreland, and Marge Sorensen, and that was posthumously. Unfortunately, I missed that ceremony, but it's always just a highlight, so put that on your calendar for next year. Last thing, the booster meeting, the Outstanding Senior Athlete Award, the applications are due on April 15th, you can self-nominate or be nominated by a coach, and on May 13th, they vote on those finals, they get scholarships, and their picture goes up on that beautiful Wall of Fame at West Campus. The booster bash they had in February, March, was very, very successful, they raised over $53,000, which will go back to all of our athletic teams with equipment and different kinds of equipment and innovative technology that they'll need to use. Spring sports are underway, and in addition to Shayla being recognized, two of our coaches were recognized for Coach of the Year nominees, our wrestling coach, Matt Figarosa, and the girls' basketball coach, Kyle Wilhelm. So really, a lot going on that was reported in those parent meetings. So thank you all for allowing me to attend all those and report back to you.
I think that's it on liaison reports. Oh, Sally, yeah, I had your name down here, but I was.
This is what people wait for, Reese.
Sally, it's my fault, I took too long, he got bored.
I would like to use my time to add that when I first came to the board, I was so overwhelmed, the classic drink-by-fire hose, that what I decided is I would just watch Reese, and whatever Reese said, I would try to learn from, and Reese's most amazing ability was the connect-the-dots. So we would be talking about something, and Reese would remember, "Yeah, but three months ago, you said this", and four months from now, we're going to be talking about that. The education you gave was phenomenal, thank you. Okay, that was really the best part. All right, four bills, just very quickly, the perennial favorite, HB 350, which would revert the cap on end-of-year salary increases from 3% back to 6%, has made it through its third reading, it is now in, I don't know, some committee. All I'm going to tell you is if you are a betting person, my bet would be on it passing, which means we're going to go right back to 6%, my prediction. Number two, one of the things, if you subscribe to the updates we get from EdRed or the IASB, is a lot of sound and fury around the physical education mandate. This has enormous impact on elementary and middle schools, it also does affect the high schools. There has been, as, as the, the various school districts try to renegotiate, chip away, one of the recent amendments has changed the high school requirement from 225 minutes per week, which is basically five days a week, to a minimum of three days a week. The high schools have said, "Thanks, that does nothing for us because we schedule on a five-day schedule, that doesn't change anything." Again, my pick-to-click is that this is going to pass, not in a popular way, but I think it is. One of the things that EdRed has pointed out about it is, the frustration is around unfunded mandates, and one of the things that we were supposed to get out of the evidence-based funding model, in addition to more money for education, was to take away the pain of the unfunded mandate, and this seems to be pushing back against the promise that was made to us. Two new bills that I have, I don't know if they will go anywhere or not, but I want them to be on your radar. One is Senate Bill 1838, which would require, and I quote, forced school district consolidation. This bill would require before May 1st of 2020, no less than 25% of school districts in Illinois be required to hold a referendum to consolidate in the next general election. It's only on its first reading, EdRed is vigorously opposing, but it's relevant. Number four, there has been, Senate Bill 1461 was introduced by Senator McConkey, it is to fix some of the things that happened with evidence-based funding, but one of the technical fixes in it would dramatically shorten the amount of time required for a voter referendum, pardon me, on decreasing the tax, how much a school district could tax. And if you'll remember, under the evidence-based funding model, it took six months between the time that the paperwork went in, they got enough signatures to put it on the ballot as a referendum, and the time that it showed up on the ballot in November. This was super important because that six months in advance of November meant that it happened before the new fiscal year, which happens on July 1st, which meant that schools and their finance offices would know that referendum was coming before they had to commit to the budget for that year. The change that has been proposed means that it could go, it could go in to be put on the ballot two days before the fiscal year starts, which would, is something that EdRed obviously is objecting to, and it would be very disruptive in the districts where it is likely to be taken advantage of. So, that's it.
Now on to the action item part of the agenda, we have several. First is adoption of a resolution authorizing honorable reduction in part-time teacher assignments. So I'm first going to ask for a motion, and then a second, and then open it up for any questions or thoughts. So may I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing reduction in part-time teacher assignments?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing honorable reduction in part-time teacher's assignments.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, thoughts? Because this involves individuals, we discussed this in our closed session, so I'll now call for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is adoption of a resolution authorizing the non-reemployment of full-time, fourth-year, non-tenured teacher. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time, fourth-year, non-tenured teacher?
I move that Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time, fourth-year, non-tenured teacher.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any thoughts, questions? Again, this was something we discussed in detail in closed session, spent a lot of time on this, walking through the process. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
I abstain.
Dr. Nemecus?
I abstain.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of a lease of three activity buses with an annual amount of $27,579. May I have a motion to approve the lease of the three activity buses? of $27,579. May I have a motion to approve the lease of the three activity buses?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the lease of three activity buses in the annual amount of $27,579.
Second?
Second.
So Jen, can you just explain the reason for this, the need?
Sure. This is actually just a kind of, we, we're struggling here today. This is the replacement of the three that we have on lease right now that are coming off. We use this for any extracurricular, co-curricular instances when we have a smaller number of students. So instead of actually renting a bus or using a bus from Olson, we will transport them. These are what we call the white activity vans. The state is very clear on when you can and cannot use these particular vehicles. In the long run, we find them to be much more of a cost-saving and be much more accessible to us when we have them located at the school. So we have four total. We have three on this cycle and one a little bit on an off-cycle.
Who drives them? Coaches?
Coaches, teachers, depending on who it is. You do not need a bus driver special license to drive them.
Commercial driver's license, okay. Okay, any other questions on that? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of the entire human resources report. A lot of stuff on there this month. So may I have a motion to approve the human resources report as presented?
I move Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, thoughts? Anything on there? Nothing? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. I'll remind our board that any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any individual board member. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for February 2019, approval of the renewal of the IHSA membership, approval of the release of executive session minutes from September 17th, 2018, and February 21st, 2019, acknowledgement of the Applause, the very generous Applause donation of the Fazoli piano, thank you, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop from March 11th, 2019, minutes of the executive session from that date, March 11th, 2019, disposal of audio recordings from April 4th, 2017. So a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Anything on there? Nope. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We only had one FOIA request this past month from Smart Procure. It was a commercial request, and that has been completed. Seven announcements, Tuesday, April 9th, is the Percussion Festival, 7:00 PM at the RMA. Friday, April 19th, there's no school. Monday, April 22nd, will be our old board, new board transition meeting, right here, same place, 7:00 PM. The 29th of April, Monday, is Snow Day makeup, where everyone's got to go to school on a day that was going to be off. May 6th to May 13th, AP exams. May 11th, prom is right in the middle. It's always, it's always right in the middle of prom, I guess. Or prom is always right in the middle of AP exams. And then this doesn't say when the play is either. So is it before May or is it after May? Last week of month?
Six, 27, April 27.
April, okay. And then Monday, May 13th, is the first new meeting of the new board, Monday, May 13th, right here, 7:00 PM, in the boardroom at West Campus.
And there is one other thing to add to that. There's a 6:00 PM reception for retiring board members, and the community and prior board members are welcome to attend.
Thank you. On the 22nd?
Not all board members are coming to the meeting.
We could. We could do that.
They're always welcome at NSSED meetings.
And the foundation meeting and, you know, all that stuff. So may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest High School Community Board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.